Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the regular, or excuse me, our regular board meeting on Monday, March 18th, 2024. We are in the St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room. It is 6:30 PM. We will call the meeting to order. First thing we should do, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. We need to consider and adopt the agenda before us and available in the Board Book packet.
A little second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted. We do not have any members of the public in the audience. Welcome, Kimberly, by the way.
Yes.
So, when people request to speak, they will give you their name to let you know that they want to speak. But at this point, we don't have anyone here. So, no one has requested to speak, correct?
Correct.
Awesome.
We requested a few.
Next up, approval of consent agenda items. This can be found in the packet in front of you and also on the Board Book. Are there any items you'd like to discuss? We can do that, too.
I'd like to discuss one. And after there's discussion, I will have Seth Putz, our new operations facilities, and, wait, no. Oh my gosh, it's been a long day.
Congratulations to May, this director.
Thank you. Has joined us this evening, and I'd like him to share a little bit about that South Elementary School exterior wall repair project that appears in the consent agenda.
So, this is a project I just kind of took up. Mark kind of spearheaded it, and I just kind of took it over a little bit and finished it. In front of you, they have a proposal from Acme Tuck Pointing Restoration. From their bid and what they, everything that's involved, what they did, we decided, my recommendation, that we follow with them. There's quite, quite a bit, less than the next bid on that. Everything in here, what they do, is pretty much, we talked to them, we got their bond, the insurance, everything needed, and Mr. Gray, my recommendation, is we go ahead and do so.
And this was something that had been included in that long-term facilities maintenance plan.
Yes.
I believe it's been put off a couple of times now, and so we should move forward with doing this.
Yeah, I took it over with Mark, and there is a few spots that need immediate attention, and they're neglecting, it's going to become worse. Any questions?
I have a question, because I'm just a question person. But on that, on that little sheet that you did where it says the base bid and then the alternative option bid, like, what, what is that? The sixteen or the eighteen thousand?
I'm sorry, do you not have that?
I'm sorry. You don't, you can't see what I'm just looking at in front of me? I mean, it's...
We had everything except this one.
That.
So, what this is, between the two companies, Mark and I sat down to make sure we have proof of insurance and bonding. We got both of that from both companies. Project process and procedures, both of them were there for that in their proposal. The base bid is the big one right there. TMI coding was the first bid. Acme Tuck Pointing was the second one. That's where the difference is on their base bid. And on the backside of that, for Acme to have an initial eighteen seven fifty, that's something that is going to do...
Well, and I have it here, too. I was just wondering. So, like, the other company, did they just bid it all as one big thing, and then Acme just broke it out into two?
They did.
Okay.
Yep. Yes, they did.
So, we don't really know if it'll be the sixty-six or the full. I guess it really doesn't matter.
It'll be the sixty-six. We went through that work and I did, and the eighteen seven fifty is not needed at this time.
Oh, I love tuck pointing.
That's one of the necessary goals. Any other questions? Thank you for the question, Tracy.
I just want you to know that I had just looked at that. It's very exciting, so...
Yep. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the consent agenda? We do need to make a motion in a second to approve.
Mr. Chair, I will move the consent agenda approval.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other items? Talk about consent agenda. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Thank you. It does not appear that we have a student spotlight tonight.
We do not.
That's sad.
It is.
I like that.
Me, too. We'll have one next time.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay. We will move into action items. The first action item is considering approval of the 2023 through 2025 SPEA teachers contract.
Yes, we went through negotiations with the SPEA leadership group and the negotiations team. We, we met several times. There were quite a few language items that we were working on. Part of, part of that was due to legislative changes during the last session, so working through earned, safe, and sick time and a few other pieces involved with leaves. And then made many just corrections to some of the verbiage. And I will let members of the negotiations team make further comments.
Yeah. A long process. Always insightful. At the end of it, I'm pleased that we settled and had an agreement. I'm always frustrated that we, you know, I feel that teachers deserve more than they receive on a national level, and that's always pulling at us. At the same time, our limited resources that we are given by the state and federal governments, we have a bucket to work within. And so, those two forces are always pulling at us. But everyone, everyone agreed in the summit, and we get to fight on for another, another cycle.
One more year.
Yeah, one more year.
I guess I'd like to say that the whole process, as has been the case with all the units that we've worked with, has been very civil, and a positive relationship between the parties has always existed. One thing I would like to mention about the agreement with the teachers is that, based on some things we heard up at the legislature today, hopefully these things won't happen. But there may be some difficulties based upon language that we've placed in the document being contradicted by changes in the earned, safe, and sick time. And so, when we met with the individual legislators that we met with, we tried to impress upon them, if they're going to make changes, don't make them in the middle of a contract period, or exempt school districts from those changes because of the fact that we negotiated these agreements, and by law, we can reopen our agreement. And that was the other option I gave them. And the one guy said, no way we're doing that, so, to allow us to reopen, reopen the agreement. So, it's just something that the legislature oftentimes, I don't think, stops and looks at all the details when they start making legislation. And so, we have a couple of things that will be impacted by potential legislation.
How are we in comparison to settlements in, to other districts in terms of percentage wise? Like, are we above? Are we below? Are we in the middle?
We're slightly below the state average.
In terms of percentages?
Yes. This includes a four percent and a four and a half percent the following year. And I'm trying to remember what the state average was.
I thought we were slightly above the state average.
We're slightly above. Yeah. I'm thinking our, our initial offer. Slightly above the, I can't...
And on the salary improvement, we're slightly above. When you, when you factor in everything, we don't have numbers.
Yeah, when you factor in insurance or whatever else, so...
And that's one of the difficulties that we always have. It would seem like an easy mechanism to say, well, we'll just compare ourselves to how other districts are doing it, or how, things have shaken out in X, Y, Z district across the state. Until, you realize that each of those districts often have wildly differing compensation packages, benefits packages, different rulings of like, you know, maybe they have PTO, maybe they don't, or, you know, there's just different mechanisms in play. And so, it's hard to get apples to apples. And there's really no central database that we can use that breaks those things down to like equalize them into a widget so we can get a true comparison. They just don't really exist. It's, it's a gut feel at some point in the game.
I know that during conversations today, as other people were testifying and sharing information, and they were saying what the average, average total cost of a teacher was, and some of them were over twice our average cost, which really gave me pause to think, okay, either they have very senior staff, or they have a very advanced pay scale. Those were metro areas, so they are going to be higher. But I was slightly thrown a kilter.
Mr. Chair, if I may just add a comment relative to the negotiations, as Mr. Dixon just indicated, it was a very pleasant conversation for the most part. We greatly thank and appreciate the teachers for their, their very professional decorum. I was just reading yesterday, as a matter of fact, or the day before, in the Minneapolis Tribune, and take it for what it's worth, but they indicated that the average salary in Minnesota varies significantly, as you just mentioned, Mr. Goss, by district. The highest was Wayzetta, not a surprise. And the, and nationally, Minnesota ranks sixteenth in terms of, of teacher salaries, slightly below the, the national average. I won't mention the state that ranks lowest, but I'm guessing that if we gave you a list of five, you could pretty readily choose it. It is further south than we are considerably. But anyway, we, we like to treat teachers and all staff fairly, but again, as was mentioned earlier, we only have limited resources, but we do the best we can.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you to the negotiations team.
Thank you.
For the work that you put in.
Good.
All right, so we need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A little second.
We have a motion and a second to consider approval of the 2023 through 2025 teachers contracts, SPEA contract. Any additional comments, discussion items? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Wait a minute. We have to direct Tracy to abstain.
Oh, yeah. Why?
As the...
There's a statute that says the spouse of a...
Did Jessica put on?
No, it's been there.
I never understand.
It just was at the officer's workshop, I was made for her.
Okay.
I understand that.
So Tracy has to abstain?
Good thing I didn't vote in all.
Yeah. So, do we re-vote?
We can, yeah.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Abstentions?
Yeah.
Tracy abstains. Motion carries. We have approved the 2023 through 2025 SPEA contract.
I was going to say Neil, like I paused the contract. I was kidding.
All right, next up, consider approval of the revised fiscal year 2024 budget. Ms. Gracie?
All right. Well, I have come to share the unfortunate news of our '24 and '25 budgets. So, we are going to start with '24. So, fiscal year '24 is the current school year that we are in, '23, '24. You should have four documents in your board book pertaining to this. The first one is in relation to our ADMs. So, on the left-hand side, you'll see a number of columns. Those are the ADMs that we were funded on in previous years, actual numbers. You'll see our 2024, our fiscal year '24 projected ADMs. So, we're sitting at, our estimate for this year is 2,068 students. Note that this is unweighted, so the majority of our funding is based on weighted numbers. This is our unweighted number. And then to the column, the columns to the right, '25 and '26 are our estimates for moving forward. I will note that our, our ADMs are up from where we had initially predicted they were going to be. We're up about thirty-five students from where we thought. So, that is good news, but we are still at, at about the same rate. As you can see, in '23, we were at 2,071. And again, we are looking at 2,068 for the budget revision that we have here. The second document is just elaborating on where we get those numbers from. So, as a reminder, we get our general, general education aid from the resident students in the seat, open enrolled students in the seat, and then students who either we tuition out, so students that are at MBED, or care and, care and treatment students. So, this is just an elaboration on how we came to arrive at that 2,068 number. We did adjust a few. This is based on January MARS data, so we adjusted down about seven students just based on what we estimate we're going to lose from now until then. Are there any questions on ADM before I move forward? All right. So, this is where then we get to, you should have a blue sheet. It is, it's a white sheet with blue headings. So, this is our summary.
Blackboard.
Oh, okay. Well, I have a blue sheet with the words. So, it looks a little bit like this. General fund is at the top, food service and our other funds are going to be at the bottom. So, if you start on the left, that was our fund balance coming into this year, July 1st of '23. As you move to the right, we have our estimated revenues, expenditures, and then our fund balance where we think we're going to end, 630 of '24. Moving to the right a little bit more, you'll see whether the fund is increasing or decreasing by dollar amount and percentage from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And then the very far column is where we, when we came into this year with our adopted budget, where we had anticipated we were going to be, the difference between where we thought we were going to be and where we're ending, both in dollars and percentages. So, that's just working our way from left to right. Now, if we go from top to bottom, our general fund unassigned, we came into this year with $3.3 million. We are estimating that our general fund is going to decrease by $1.1 million, leading, leaving us at the $2.2 million fund balance in our unassigned. The big key players in this decrease, so we had planned to move $835,000 from our assigned funds up to unassigned before this, at the end of fiscal year '23. We had decided not to do that, knowing that the men in the middle project was going to be coming, and we wanted to be able to have some reserves to take care of unexpected expenses that came about as a result of that project. So, we didn't move the money at that time, but it had been in the budget that that money was going to have been moved. The other major change is a result of negotiations. So, when we did the adopted budget, we had estimated a two percent increase specifically on teachers, but on salaries as a whole across the board. And as you just approved, our teachers came in at four percent in this first year. So, that was an additional $300,000 on the budget that we hadn't anticipated when we did our adopted budget. So, those are the two major players in the unassigned fund balance. As you work your way down, prepaid's are just things that we pay for in '24 that are part of '25. Our restricted funds are going to be things, safe schools, compensatory, English learners. So, those funds that we receive, but they are restricted in their purposes, and we have to use it just for those purposes. For the most part, we try and use those funds up every year to the, to the best that we can. It's not always possible, but we try to. The assigned funds, like I mentioned, that was one of the funds that we had not moved up to unassigned. But those are things that we target expenses that we know that are coming, that we need to have set aside, severance, VIBA, those kinds of things. And then our operating capital and LTFM. So, those all make up our general fund. As we continue to move down, we have food service. So, we actually estimate that our food service, we're going to decrease our fund balance by $182,000. Part of that is because we have had more expenses than we thought. First of all, just with the price of food, things are going up with negotiations, and where we settled with our food service group, that is also going up. And we're just, we're still trying to figure out with Minnesota schools and feeding Minnesota the free meals for students, how that funding piece is going to work with the federal rate, with the state rate, with what parents are paying for second meals and entrees. The revenue side, we're also sort of trying to weave our way through. But we are predicting that that fund balance is actually going to decrease. Community service, we are estimating a decrease in the overall community service fund of $275,000. So, that's actually looking better than we had anticipated by about $52,000. The big thing to note here is our school readiness. We talked about this a lot at the business committee meeting, but our, our school readiness program is something that our district has been committed to. Unfortunately, it's not funded to, to the rate that we need it to be, and so it is continuing to have a decreasing negative fund balance. So, that's something that we'll have to focus on this year and as we move into future years, what we're going to do about that. Debt redemption is obviously our bonds. We have our scholarships. And then our insurance fund, on a happy note, is actually doing very well and running very sustainably. So, we hope that that continues, and that was obviously a good decision two years ago when we went to self-insurance. So, overall, this is the '24 revised budget as we are proposing it. The last, the last attachment is this same information, but just laid out a little bit in more detail. So, outlining those restricted funds with the fund balances, outlining the assigned funds with those fund balances, et cetera, et cetera. What questions do you have? I know that was a lot of information and not a lot of good news, so...
Could you speak a little bit to the dental reserve? I know that we're also self-insured in dental. Is that?
Yep. We are, so we are self-insured in both. So, if you look at the detailed, the second of the two budget attachments, so we have self-insurance for dental and health. We had to do a manual adjustment because the fund balances between the two have been wonky over the last two years as we were trying to figure out the coding for those. But our fund balance for dental is going to be at about $51,000 at the end of this year. I will say that in at least the eight years that I've been here, we have not, to my knowledge, increased dental rates. And so, that is one recommendation that NIS is going to bring forth this year to the business committee and to the board, that we increase our dental rates because they've been the same for at least seven to eight years.
So, I'll just go back to that first page when we were talking about FY '24 and the decision not to transfer that $835,000. That line, so that came originally when the new high school was built, and it was unsure whether operating the new building was going to have more expense. And so, very wisely, put some money aside at the time. It was 1.6 million. And then, as we were in the pandemic, some of that money was used, half of it was last year, to be able to maintain staffing and lower class size and, and provide more interventions for students. And then, it was planned that the second half would be used for this year. That's still, I mean, we still could make that transfer from assigned to unassigned to help address that 1.1 million. You know, as we move forward in the coming weeks, actually, this week, I have some large blocks of time set aside with principals and the admin team to start making plans for how we address the deficits that you see in '24 and that you'll learn about here in '25, and I can speak to that in a little bit. But that may be one of the recommendations that we include is transferring part or all of that assigned fund.
That would be one-time money.
Correct.
Which, if you look, I mean, over the last number of years, our expenses have generally in our, in our unassigned fund have been outweighing our revenues for the last three or four years. So, it would be one-time money. It wouldn't fix the problem that, that we kind of have at hand.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
It would help now, but not fix the problem.
Yeah. Yeah, it could save us from cutting people now, but two years from now, it'd still be the same problem.
Yeah, kicking it down. That's what they call that.
So, maybe, Superintendent Grant says, I don't, maybe this is not the time. Maybe it's coming with the fiscal '25 question, but you've mentioned having blocks of time to talk with administrative, administrative leadership and others. Like, what does this hole mean? Right? You know, like, what do those conversations need to involve to make decisions about how to get out of the hole, or make the hole more shallow?
Yeah. And that, that is part of the FY, I mean, it's really both years.
Right.
But it really has big implications. When, when you, you know, when we talk about FY '25, we'll see that it's much larger than the 1.1 indicated in FY '24. That's going to take some big decisions about restructuring, about services that we provide, really looking into every aspect of our budget as a district to see how we can continue to provide the highest quality education that we possibly can while meeting the fiduciary responsibilities of being a school district. So, with FY '24 budget, this is, you're presenting a revised '24 budget to be approved. I don't approve, but, you know, accepted as a revised budget.
As factual.
Yeah, exactly. As factual.
So, am I reading these numbers correctly? The revised budget that will be approved will end up with a fund balance that was higher than was projected?
That's what was adopted. So, I'll let Megan.
So, our general fund budget, our general fund, fund balance as a whole, we had estimated that we were going to be at 5.7 million. We are now estimating it's going to be at 5.2 million. That's the general fund as a whole. If you look at just unassigned, we had estimated we were going to be... we had estimated we were going to be at three point nine million and now we're revising that to two point two.
I was reading them backwards, so.
The, the second column from the right is really confusing and I wasn't trying to clarify that, but.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I will move the adoption of the revised budget.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve, consider approval of the revised fiscal twenty-four budget. Uh, any further discussion? Comments, questions? Discussion, discussion, discussion.
I think we all recognized the situation needs to be dealt with prudently.
Yep. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same side? Motion carries. The revised fiscal twenty-four budget has been approved. Thank you, Megan.
More good news?
Looks even better.
We need to now, are we taking action on this? This was discussed.
Oh, yes, you.
Oh, yeah.
No. That's LTFM.
The um, the addendum would say that your action would be taking the the recommended action for this next piece would be directing the administration to create a proposed balanced budget for FY twenty-five.
Oh, and I, maybe I have further discussion?
No, I mean.
No, this is the next item now.
He was asking what action, what would that then?
Cause the next item just says discuss the projected fiscal year twenty-five budget. So we are on that now.
All right, so moving forward to twenty-four, twenty-five, we should have three documents this time in relation to this. Um, again, the first one is looking at ADMs. This is the driver of our largest source of revenue. Um, so the first number of columns are our ADMs that we received funding on. If you look at FY twenty-four, that's the current year we're in, you'll see that two thousand sixty-eight number again. Fiscal year twenty-five, we are estimating that we are going to be down fifty students. So that is fiscal year twenty-five and then you'll see the out-years after that. We did compare this to the demographic study that was done last February and it's actually um, above where the demographic study had put us. The other thing that I did want to note is that we adjusted our ADM um, estimates to more align with MDE and region five and how they, they suggest that we run our estimates. Um, so in trying to figure out this number, this is one thing that MDE will say is the hardest thing to predict is your student counts and when, where they're gonna land. Um, so we felt that the number, if we arrived at two thousand nineteen, um, was an accurate number, but also we wanted to be, we wanted to be realistic. Um, so that is our estimate is that we are going to be down about fifty students going into next year. With that being said, then we shift to the document that should look similar to what you saw for fiscal year twenty-four, same format. Um, the only thing that is missing is the far right column. So we'd be starting the year with two point two million dollars in our general fund unassigned. You'll see our revenues and expenses. Um, the adjustment is just moving some expenses from our general fund to cover our restricted funds. Sorry, so should be, look like this. Hopefully you have that.
Sit down, I'll talk FY twenty-five preliminary combat adopted budget bash summary.
Yep.
There we go. Page ninety-seven.
Lord.
The ninety-seven's kinda hidden.
The ninety-seven's.
It's printed landscape.
Where is it then?
It's under action eleven.
Four, three. Oh, great.
Sorry, sorry. Um, okay, so the adjustment is just moving funds from general fund to restricted funds to cover some of those. As you can see, right now, we are estimating a two point two million dollar decrease to our unassigned fund balance, which would put us at a negative fund balance for our unassigned. Moving down, we have our prepaid's again, are restricted. So those um, learning and development, safe schools, early uh, English learner, um, so that fund balance is increasing slightly. Our assigned fund balance is increasing slightly and then operating cap and LTFM has a very small decrease. So overall, our general fund as a big picture is decreasing by one point nine million dollars. So the big things coming in here, like I mentioned, those fifty thousand, or excuse me, fifty students, which equate to roughly five hundred thousand dollars. Um, that's revenue that we estimated is gonna decrease. Um, and then with all of our negotiations and we estimated health insurance right now, they're, they're saying we're probably gonna come in between seven and eight percent. We con, we entered all of our contracts as they've been negotiated, had to estimate the two that are remaining. Um, and we have one and a half million dollars in salaries and fringe that are an increase in twenty-five. So add that to the inflationary costs of all of the other things. Um, and that's how we got to the two point two million dollar decrease in the general fund unassigned. If you keep going down further, we have food service, so it's kind of more of the same, increased cost of food with the negotiations. And we're still trying to figure out the revenue on food service, so we're estimating the food service is going to be decreasing. Community service, you'll see a number similar um, in decrease from twenty-four to twenty-five, so we're estimating community service will be down about three hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. And we have debt redemption for our bonds, the scholarship. And again, the insurance fund is, we're still estimating that that's gonna be doing okay. So the last attachment is just more detailed information with the same summary. Correct. If we are gonna make no changes to um, contracts, if we are gonna make no changes to staffing, um, if we were to take the insurance rate recommendation that they're going to give us in a few weeks, that is how we estimated this.
Oh, we can't do that.
So we're looking out five years, we project we're gonna be a hundred and forty students lower in five years than we are today?
Well, the, the projection of students isn't that's if it were to follow
Right.
current trajectory.
Right, okay.
Um, what the demographer said is that we would be, you know, we'd have this dip and we'd kind of level off and then it would slowly start to increase over time. We hope that, you know, with the, the new housing that is going in uh, with the continued growth of the community, that we would continue to see uh, en- enrollment numbers increase as well. Right now, uh, over the last, well, since the last four years, since COVID, uh, the population of Saint Peter has actually increased. But the number of school-aged children in our community has decreased. And you know, we talked about that when we looked at number of kids transferring in and transferring out, that it's not that there's been a big change and, and students are opting out of the district or out of the region. It's just that there aren't as many school-aged children as there, there was. I'm not sure why, if it's a generational difference or if it's people waited during COVID unsure times of not having as many students and we'll see a bump, but it's where our current reality is.
Lack of housing for larger families is a driving factor as well.
Correct. In the past two years, we've um, we've lost over a hundred Somali students based on their families not having available housing in the community.
So we turn our eyes to architecting a solution. Um, are we taking action on that tonight?
We are directing uh, administration to recommend budgetary adjustments to create a balanced fiscal budget. So we are saying, go forth and do work. Yep. That is the, that is the directive we are deciding on as a board tonight.
Yeah, I, so I, I think the budgetary information we received this week and tonight is shocking and surprising. And we can transfer one-time funds around to do a thing, to buy some time, but that will do little to nothing to actually solve the problem. In some ways, there's an easy equation. If you have fewer students, you must do, you must educate those students with fewer smaller infrastructure, which including teachers and, and people.
Services.
And services. So in some ways, it's very easily understood. But the way that we do that is less understood and probably more nuanced. And so I would expect that you know, rather than maybe looking at some of the most typical levers that would be pulled in this scenario, to, now would be a really good time to deconstruct the game and the board and reconstruct, re-architect it from, you know, potentially the, the ground up to see what can be done. We know we have things like a wonderful principal who is recently retired and a, a school opening there. We know the capacity of those buildings. Um, are there things, options, opportunities to do things differently? Maybe? Now would be a great time to see some real in-depth creative and alternative solutions that could potentially help us survive, you know, not only the two, four, six-year timeframe, but the ten, twenty, thirty-year timeframe.
With the anticipation that state funding is likely not gonna skyrocket and enrollment is likely going to decrease.
Right.
This is a long-term
Yeah.
problem.
The, the calvary that is the state funding is not.
Right, right.
So this is an in-house problem that we will require in-house solutions. Unfortunately.
Last time we did this, um, we were able to pull a big lever at the middle school, which made for some unpopular decisions, but it was a big decision that took a large chunk of the problem. It was very sad for the middle school, but it took a lot of the decision. Now it's gonna touch a lot more people, so. Good luck with that.
Yeah, so when we, I, I think we're all very um, involved and take it personally at many levels and want to ensure that we construct the best path forward. And that might mean more vigorous oversight or at least check-ins. You know, I, I know that we have our study sessions that are regularly scheduled. In my mind, this topic will be like top of agenda for a while. So I don't wanna lose track of that. I'd like to, you know, regular check-ins. Things are gonna be changing and moving at all times, but I think now's a good time to have high awareness.
And I'm encouraged to hear the plan not to kick it down the road, that this is gonna be a plan that is gonna be a long-term solution rather than just Band-Aid for right now and then the heck with what happens later. So the long-term planning is critical.
So you don't need a motion or anything to direct, to say?
Well, we do, we need a, this does require a motion to, the motion is that we direct administration to recommend budgetary adjustments to create a balanced fiscal year twenty-five budget.
So, so move.
I'll second that.
Okay, perfect. We have a motion and a second. Uh, further discussion, comments, questions?
We can really say anything about the reserve policy, which is how many days?
Sixty days.
Is that right?
And I see we were down to point two.
If, if that doesn't.
Yeah, if we don't make adjustments, so. I think people need to understand that to be fiscally prudent, that doesn't mean we come in with balanced budget with a zero reserve.
Right.
There should be
Yeah, it's not.
As close as possible to the policy.
Do we actually have a policy that says sixty days or is it just?
Uh, we do.
We do, okay.
It's in the I'm not sure if it's one hundreds or two hundreds, but.
In that number, that, a target number. We want to have a, a budget of saved cash to be able to run the district for X number of days. That X for the number of days has fluctuated over time. We've worked really hard to get that number higher. Um, knowing that state finance is often a storm to be weathered and um, it's important to have some reserves, but we do have control over that number.
Well, I just know from, when we were up at the state conference, that Saint Peter does have a high number there. I just want to know if we want to, do we want to, to make budget cuts to have that number be sixty days? Or do we want budget cuts to have that number be fifty days? Or, do you know what I'm saying? Like, I don't know.
I would expect that is on the table.
Yeah. That can be part of the recommendations is to lower that number.
I mean, I'm talking like ten, but you know.
Yeah, right.
But I do think there, that's a tricky game to play when you're taking money out of the piggy bank. Because that can
Be careful.
Spiral quickly.
And I think it would be with an understanding of like gradual, like this year and then we're going back up kind of thing. Or whatever the board decides, because it's not Tracy's decision. I'm just thinking out loud because I'm a problem solver, so.
No, for sure. I think the going back up part is not the easy part.
I understand that. I saw a lot of smirks around the table.
So Saint Peter and Saint Peter Schools has a long tradition of working together to find creative solutions to problems. And whenever our admin team or our principal team is together, it is often said we do hard things together. And this is one of those things that we will be approaching together as a team and really looking at um, any creative solutions that we can. We know some of them might be easier accomplished than other things. Um, some other areas that are, are bigger changes may take longer to implement. But we will be working together and we'll be uh, working with our teams and our buildings as well to help with that. And we'll make sure that the board has um, information along the way so that you feel like you have the information that you need um, to know that we've, we've turned over as many stones as we can to try to address the problem while continuing the proud tr- tradition of Saint Peter Schools and the education that we're able to provide. while continuing the proud tr- tradition of St. Peter schools and the education that we're able to provide. Also know that we are definitely not alone in this journey. I know that there are districts all over the state who are addressing large deficits as well. And so um I know that there are many conversations going on around school board tables um this week and this month that are very similar to ours and they feel very much the same.
This is the one we gotta solve.
Exactly.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I uh I would like to compliment Megan on her putting the rollout and the projections together, recognizing it's not the news that anybody wants, but it's very important to be realistic and conservatively realistic and not arbitrarily raise bottoms, et cetera, just to be accurate and practical as we possibly can. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Megan.
Did we did have a motion?
Yeah.
And a second? No, but we have a motion and a second. Okay. Any other, just any last discussion? While we will proceed to vote, uh all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries to direct the administration to recommend budgetary adjustments to create a balanced fiscal twenty-five budget.
Thank you.
Next item up, consider approval of the revised resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty-five long-term facilities maintenance maintenance ten-year plan. Is that Megan again?
It is. You guys sent me one more time.
Whole night.
Almost done.
Do it.
I should have made a name tag for myself. Um, okay, well, this this will look similar to um what you had seen in July, um, when we adopted our ten-year plan at that point. But Baird and ICS went through and helped us adjust this for the project that's gonna be happening at the middle school. Um, so if you look any of the, is yours in color or is it in black and white?
We have half of it.
You don't have one at all?
We have cut and cost.
Oh.
We don't have the color printed.
Well, actually, we don't.
Okay, well, so we have our ten-year plan. Um, the adjustments that were made were the adjustments.
Um, I'm not sure if you can.
You saw most of the plan.
You saw most of the plan. The only adjustments were made were made were adjustments that are going to be made specific to the project, both on the expense side and then on the revenue revenue side. So we are required to adjust this because of our project and then resubmit it to MDE. So those were really the only changes that were made were changes specific to the project happening at the middle school. I don't know because you don't have it in front of you, what questions I can answer.
This is a resolution?
It is a resolution.
Yep.
Trying to remember how much they get, uh, the details.
I know.
Do you, so you have the information in front of you?
I do have the information.
Is there a way to distill the the highlights, like the top five?
Let me take a shot at if I get it. If I get, no, I don't already that. I can't see it, guys. No, I can't. This'll be, I th- I'm hoping this'll be a little easier.
Are you all familiar with Michael Holheisel?
So nice to see you.
Oh, yeah.
Nice to see you again. So remember your long-term facility maintenance program, you get three hundred eighty dollars per kid.
Yep.
So you're getting about uh revenue of, if you beat me to it, uh, you're getting annual revenue for those kids. You're getting uh, I thought I would be able to race through it. I'm gonna go to the expenditure sheet.
Yeah, one one, eight ninety-eight.
Revenue sheet, isn't it true? So you're getting, uh, what'd you say?
Eight ninety-eight.
Yep, just shy of nine hundred thousand a year. So as that annual money comes in, you've allocated that between uh talk pointing, your favorite subject, uh, elec- electroco interior services surfaces, uh roof systems, uh site projects, meaning paving, sidewalks, uh, reconditioning of the tar, mechanical systems, plumbing, all those are your deferred maintenance items. So this merely is saying that, okay, with this plan, you're going to move forward with, um, we're asking you to adopt a resolution moving forward with twenty-three and a half million dollars worth of bonds. Now remember, this LTFM is for the facilities portion of your budget. You have just been talking about your general budget or your operational side of the budget, so two fifths. So we're independently raising money or through either utilizing dollars are gonna come eventually through that nine hundred collection of nine hundred thousand, or we're saying that the the indoor air quality plan, which raises dollars outside your current budget, fund this. And they raise the budget through a tax, uh, through the through the tax levy collection, so to speak. So with that, the IAQ portion of this is about uh twenty point two million of the project and the deferred maintenance on projects that that are part and parcel, that you're in the walls, but they don't qualify, is about two point four of that. And then you're asking for one more component with the election. So all this plan does is say it takes any of the items in this twenty-three million that possibly were in the next ten years of the plan and expends it within the next three, but it puts it with the bond issue. So then we're hopefully making that nine hundred thousand go farther each year down the road 'cause you've taken a chunk of these deferred maintenance parts, items out. How is that for a horrible explanation?
That is pretty good.
So, but that's what we're essentially, then we modify that plan and you'll get to do this again
In July.
In July. Assuming we don't completely get it revamped legislatively and according to Superintendent Gronseth, nothing's getting done after meetings today. So we're not major changes as we had hoped that were floating through with the governor's bill as it was revealed today. Since his side, since his inside information is also my inside information, because it's the same person.
Routine procedure.
Okay.
It appears to me it's routine.
Thank you, Ken, for putting your Captain Crunch decoder ring on there.
No.
What happened, I really appreciate your help there.
Please tell me if I'm wrong, but it certainly appears to be routine that we just simply need to do.
Yep, we're just doing a, it's like revising revising your original budget.
Exactly.
We're just revising the plan and stating that the intention of we're gonna borrow this money, but we're maximizing the use of the your other available dollars, but those available dollars are basically spent year three through ten where we modify the plan.
And we can always hope that they increase the amount.
We were working legis-, we were working legislatively to include, we didn't, a group of us met and we convinced the secret person to ask the governor to not increase the amount, but to place roof projects and paving projects into the indoor air quality bucket. So that your three hundred eighty dollars could be used for walls, carpeting, very sustainable items with that three hundred eighty bucks per kid. Um, the reason we asked this is that there's probably oh at least forty schools out within the state that have major roofing issues, and if they bundle their entire three hundred eighty dollar per kid this year, they can't afford to fix their entire roof and pay it off over the next thirty years. Roofing expenses have just, as many other expenses, um, we ebb and flow through construction expenses, but roofing expenses have skyrocketed.
That three eighty three has not increased for years, has it?
Uh, I wanna say that if this was implemented in fifteen, we phased into it in seventeen, so yeah, six years, six, seven.
I heard it, several six years.
Yep, that's about right. Well, you you think, but that's not, I mean, as as you know, as you re-recap of the plans for the last year, uh, uh, these items were deemed not sexy by a previous legislative body. They've deemed that that you can make these hard decisions without the voters because the voters aren't aren't gonna vote for a a redo of your indoor air quality or a roof or fixing a wall or a mirror or replacement. Um, so uh it doesn't get a lot of attention if you don't, if you're not consistently pushing and pushing and pushing. And I believe the powers that be have felt that um getting the inflation factor put on the basic formula was a big, big step one. I think the hope was that we would turn inflation factor on the three eighty similar to what we turned on for the basic formula. But we think that's now, that idea is probably being pushed out till later two thousand twenties to early two thousand thirty, when we could finally get that done, which is very sad. A couple of us will be retired by then, Megan, not to name any names.
Some of us probably won't even be around.
Mr. Chair, do we have a motion on the floor?
We have.
Okay, uh, then I move to just a moment. Yes, I move the resolution stating the intent to issue general obligation bonds to finance projects for the next ten years.
Move the resolution, it would be moved resolution.
Oh, the long, the ten-year, uh, long-term, LTFM. Yes, the revised resolution, sorry, adopting the twenty fiscal year twenty-five LTM, LTFM ten-year plan. My apologies. Couldn't be more clear.
Yeah. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? This is a resolution, uh, so we need to do a roll call vote. Start here, Ms. Rosback.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Stewie?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Cowan?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the resolution passes. We have approved the revised fiscal year twenty-five long-term facilities maintenance ten-year plan. Thank you. Next up, another resolution.
Story continues, same topic.
Consider, consider approval of the resolution stating the intent to issue general obligation bonds to finance projects within the ten-year plan.
So basically, we covered both of those because they were intertwined with the last discussion. However, um, like the resolution, you've been involved with us previously, uh, we use this resolution, we call it a parameters resolution, in that we're setting goals of the future borrowing. So this allows us to repair all the material, get, talk with rating agencies, talk about your sixty-day reserve plan to maintain our rating. Um, it also sets forth that this uh puts you in the credit enhancement program so that in the event of a catastrophe that happens locally, that that we have experienced in my lifetime, uh, while I was working at St. Peter, uh, the way back when with a different company, when the tornado came through, the state, the state would step in and pay, make the payment if the district couldn't. So that's called the credit enhancement program. That also he- helps uh helps any investors know that 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 gives them a little bit of more, it makes them less risk risk adverse because that's in place. Um, we say that we will not, uh, we will not purchase these bonds at more than five and a quarter percent. And uh I believe the last piece is that it allows, it's used to fund the cost of indoor air quality improvements at the St. Peter Middle, St. Peter Middle School site and various deferred maintenance projects included with the plan that you just passed. And the last piece of this just says that uh uh it allows your administration to do certain items of uh, like signing the credit enhancement resolution and preparing other documents. And the final is upon this, upon pricing, uh, Bill and Megan are allowed to sign along with a director of the, a school board officer to sign the purchase agreement. When that's all done, we bring them back to the board for final ratifying of the awarding resolution and all the mortgage paperwork. So this kicks it off. Uh, we are definitely under five percent right now. We uh we're we're really close to uh in that mid-fours to maybe even better. Uh, hopefully, uh, what are we, I think that, I think we got a message on my email this afternoon from my corporate office, said that we're forty-eight hours away from uh Powell turning, turn, talking again to the nation. And so we'll know in two more days where we sit as far as where they think the next round of cuts are. So that's basically, this resolution gets us, gets us ready to prepare to sell these bonds in the near future. And then, uh, but that doesn't mean that we're selling them tomorrow. Well, we obviously have an election going on as well and we will watch on that because if we can bundle the two together, that makes it even more economical for the district.
So as a reminder, this, the middle school HVAC project we approved in December requires the sale of general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed twenty-three million, three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to fund the project. So this resolution is, we'll move forward with the sale of bonds.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. This is another resolution. So we need to go around the table. Ms. Rosback.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Stewie?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
We have uh passed the resolution stating the intent to issue general obligation bonds to finance projects within the ten-year plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, consider petition of landowners for detachment and annexation from one school district to another.
A little respite from talking about finances. Uh, we received a petition from a landowner, which happens to be Northland United Church. Uh, and they have um a parsonage uh close to the church that happens to be right on the edge of the district. In fact, it's a little bump out on our district. And how this works is if a landowner would like to move from one school district to another, they need to petition both of the school districts that are involved, the one that they're currently in and the one that they would like to be in. Uh, both have to pass resolutions and then those resolutions move forward to the county, who then uh approves or disapproves of of the final action. In this particular case, there's no financial implication because the property is owned by a tax-exempt organization. So it's not about tax dollars. Uh, for this one, there's a preference for uh St. Peter uh on part of the family that's living in the parsonage. Um, and so we are following up on their petition by bringing it to you for consideration. My recommendation would be moving forward with it. There's no negative effect to the district that in fact could lead to future students uh for St. Peter.
I'll move the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So it would just mean that they wouldn't have to probably open up all their kids, or is that the motivating factor? Okay.
Now the students are, are they adnegate or did I hear?
They are homeschool.
Homeschool, okay.
That my understanding is, um, one, they could be involved with St. Peter Athletics, which has homeschool students in another districts. They would not be able to. And that there could be um time in the future that they want to attend school and they would want to attend um in St. Peter if they were going to attend a public school.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the resolution. Uh, we will go around the table. Ms. Rosback.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Stewie.
Aye.
Aye.
I.
I.
The I's have it. Resolution has been accepted, petition for land, of landowners for detachment and annexation from one school district to another.
And then we will forward this to, uh, the requesters and then they will continue the process.
Next up, MVAD facilities discussion.
Back to difficult conversations. Um, in the study session, um, you, you saw this presentation and we had a lot of discussion. You had a lot of discussion as a board. I shared information. Given our financial state and the implications, uh, the financial implications of this plan on Saint Peter and Saint, Saint Peter taxpayers, um, while it hurts my heart because I love what this would do for our special ed programs and the expansion of those programs, at this time I cannot recommend, um, approving this proposal based on the financial impact it would have on the district. And how that would, um, play out in a decision is, uh, you have three options as a board right now. You can totally overrule me and approve this and move forward with it. Or you could, um, make a motion and vote it down, or there could be a lack of a motion and there would be no action.
Well, I will say that I agree that we can't do this because of the financial implications. Um, if I had about, I don't know how many million dollars or whatever we need, I would do that, but I think there's some things that would be solved by us having this and one thing is it would give our, um, Rock Bend some space in that building to be able to expand their programs and it obviously would allow for MVAD to be able to have space for their level four program we have there and some other programs that we've talked about at MVAD, one of them being a transition program, which I hope by the time I'm down at this board, we can see through. Um, but now is not the time, so that makes me very sad. Um, but hopefully we can problem solve some of those things outside of purchasing or recommending MVAD purchase building. So I was very, very excited about that and it's one of those things where it's just, I guess the timing isn't right for it, so.
Some of the alternatives that were discussed, uh, with the MVAD board and the MVAD partner superintendents was making some adjustments to our building, investing in making some improvements or even in addition to the current building. Uh, so I think if, if this is, um, turned down, that those would be the next conversations. It's how could we make some changes to, um, be a better fit for MVAD at that site.
So if this, actually, I didn't want to die for a lack of emotion. We would be awaiting another set of action to potentially look at improvements in the existing building if that were to be, okay.
Correct.
And without physical space, there is just nothing that can be done in terms of a transition program. Because I just need to say again, if our ultimate goal is to have kids walk across the stage for graduation and that's our goal and we're just a machine that we're just supposed to walk across the stage, then we do a great job. But there are kids, there's, there are kids that need more than that. And I feel and I know we're missing the mark on some of these kids. And so do we need space or do we need, and I know, I just got done saying we have to but you know what I mean, but ugh, you know, it's just, it's hard. And I don't want to get going again because Ken gave me two Snickers to keep me stable. So I will stay stable, but.
I will say one of their conver, one of the conversations that MVAD was, um, rather than in making a major investment in property like Scholarship America and remodeling was for a specific, um, uh, transition program could lease a much smaller space if, if that were the goal.
Is there a way that we could work out the division of the cost differently? I know it's based upon the number of special ed students that we have. But so many of our special ed students are served fully by our own staff. If you could somehow get credit for that and shift the cost of providing for the students that MVAD is dealing with a little more equally amongst the actual students that they're doing, that would change some of those numbers and maybe make it doable. I know the other districts aren't going to like that.
I'm, I'm going to speak and then I'm going to look at Megan and she's going to tell me if I'm correct or not. Uh, but it is my understanding that different expenses at MVAD are divided different ways. Some are equally among partner districts, others are by students served, others by how many students in your district. And so there is some of that, um, already where we are.
But when we look at the cost.
I got the nod.
We look at the cost of the facility that's serving students. And if we're paying a disproportionate share of that amount in comparison to number of our students that are being served and the number of other students being served, I think that, you know, there should be room for negotiation.
Right now, we are currently about forty percent of MVAD population. So forty percent of the lease came out to be three hundred fifty something.
But are we forty percent of the students that are in that actual building?
I think we've kind of all come to the understanding that right now is a time for some critical thinking and creative problem solving and this is just one more. And I know that it's a study session. There was good discussion and not that I'm doing this to the administrative team, but I think that all of this comes together into a kind of an overall view of everything that we're doing and how do we do it better and more fiscally responsibly. So I would say this goes in that pile.
It's potentially conceivable, I think we all probably have a consensus, and I can't speak for anyone, that we, it's not affordable for us to do with this format with additional two hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. But there's so many valuable things in here and it's certainly possible that it could come back to us in a different form that is affordable. So, you know, if we decline this or let it pass because of no motion, regardless of which route this goes, hopefully we'll be able to analyze this again and perhaps in a, in a doable form.
What Ken said.
We will move on. Last on the action items list, consider approval of a hockey cooperative agreement. Mister forecast, he's been waiting.
With a great measure of patience.
Do you want us to repeat everything we've said already tonight?
Yeah. Can you start over? Yeah. That'd be great. Give me the gist of it. Um, does everybody have a copy of, okay, so, um, we, as far as, uh, the school is involved in our Minnesota River Bulldog Hockey Cooperative, um, got together to review the agreement because the last one that we, um, were able to find and look at, um, I'm sure we have others, but the last one I was able to find through all the digging was back from two thousand eight and nine when it was Saint Peter, La Sure Henderson, and then at the time, La Center with Montgomery. And so, um, we felt it was probably time to update this because it included, well, TCU now as a, as a district, once they, um, came together and then also adding in Belle Plaine and Cleveland into our cooperative. So we have, um, all five schools. So it was important to go through and update that to make sure that we had all five schools represented and they all had a voice at the table, um, when we were looking at the cooperative agreement. So a lot of it is just kind of updating that. In the past, it was like, you know, Saint Peter and La Sure Henderson was made the main verbiage. Now it's trying to update that to make sure that, um, like I said, all, all districts are represented when we're talking about what is part of the agreement. Um, so as we, I tried to highlight some of the main things that have been, been changed. Um, one of the main things that was changed is, um, as far as the scheduling of games, um, it used to be the girls would kind of be scheduled through Saint Peter and the boys would be scheduled through La Sure. Um, we've changed that mainly because, um, of our agreement with the, or the, um, connection with the Big South Conference, which is what we're in for hockey. Um, but also because it was pretty silly when schools would call and ask us to schedule a game for girls hockey and then say, what about boys? And I'd say, give, you know, La Sure Henderson a call to schedule that when, you know, and then we'd be overlapping each other for home games and it was just a mess. So, um, it got just changed to being, um, on our plate, which, um, just like with any scheduling, when it comes to activities, um, is also in conjunction with the other schools, but in this case also the head coaches as well. So, um, just to help to ease that. Um, so there's no confusion and, um, just with the connection between the Big South. So that was the first main, um, change that was highlighted. Um, as you go through, um, the expenses for salaries and benefits, um, everything is, is prorated depending on the number of, um, participants you have in the program. You know, that's all done through, um, you know, just based off of percentage that's given out to each school at the end of the, the seasons. Um, but we did talk about the salaries. Um, in the past, it was all based off of where you were working is what salary you received. Um, so a lot of times it was that the girls program was paid off through us, boys program was paid through La Sure. Um, but that is, you know, the, we don't pay the exact same. And so then you're looking at, um, making sure that those are equaled out and everything along those lines. So our, our goal was to basically kind of create a separate, um, pay scale that is very similar to all of ours as the five districts and try to find an average and make sure that those are the same or as best represented as we can. But it would be paying the, the hockey coaches separate compared to maybe what our teacher contract might say. Um, basically for those reasons is that, um, right now, you know, we had, um, t, uh, coaches from Saint Peter going over to La Sure to get paid for hockey because it paid more and we wanted to make sure boys and girls were getting paid even and it was just kind of a lot of a mess. Um, this will allow that the teacher or the coaches, if they are teachers here in the district, get that money, but then also as part of like, you know, their overall money that they're getting from the district, the, you know, um, the, um, TRA, all of those things come into play, obviously. So, um, when we look at that, it'll be a main, um, con, kind of conglomerate of all five districts and what their pay scale is, but separate from maybe what the contract would be in, depending on what district they're working at or representing. If they are not a, um, a teacher in any of our districts, then they would just be, uh, an employee through La Sure as that's the fiscal, main fiscal agent for the, the hockey cooperative, if that makes sense. Um, so that's, that was one kind of the main, uh, or one, um, adjustment as well. Um, and then number ten, I, I ti, I kind of alluded to it, um, but the completion of the hockey season, each additional district, will be billed for the participation in the cooperative on a prorated basis. So it just takes into account that we had, you know, forty boys hockey players this year. Saint Peter had ten of them. Here's your percentage that you owe for everything that was paid, ice time, busing, coaches, um, you know, equipment, anything else you can think of that would be covered throughout the entire hockey season. So, um, you know, some years that is, uh, ten percent and some years we're at forty percent. So it's pretty, um, you know, pretty fluctuating, but, um, so hard to say this is what it's going to be every year, um, but it really just does depend on the number of participants that we have here in Saint Peter on a yearly basis. Um, other financial considerations, um, we had a couple of schools that allowed their students to go to, um, activities for free. And, um, us being one of them, some schools required them to pay or they could buy a student pass, um, and it kind of got to be a mess for the, um, person selling tickets to, all right, which passes are allowed, who should be going in for free and whatnot. Um, basically there, it was just made sure to be put in there that, um, any passes from other, from any of our five districts will be honored, including student passes and students will be in free regardless of what they, um, do at, you know, basketball or football games. So, um, just making sure that we're all on the same page to, um, make that easier as well instead of doing a couple of different things depending on the, um, the school. Um, a couple of other, um, liability insurance is something that just needed to be updated. Um, since it's on there was a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand. Probably need a few more zeros on there to cover that. So we'll make sure that's updated, but we get that through Mister Pell each year. It's just making sure that this is updated as far as the correct number. Um, transportation, um, it was kind of pretty broad, or it was pretty broad. Um, it still is, but it just kind of helps to make sure that each district is on the same page about what's expected. Um, you know, some schools require all of their students to bus to every practice, every home game, away game. Um, like us, for example, while others are more of like, all right, make sure you get there, good luck, kind of. And so, um, it's really a, a, whatever the district, um, requires or has set for them and not just a set, um, fee. Um, the other piece is that Saint Peter does provide transportation to all away games. So we use Saints Bus Service for, um, those games and mainly because our students are picked up at the high school and, um, given ride over there and they just continue on their way and brought back home instead of a bus dropping off. And if we lose, use La Sure Bus Service, you know, the bus would have to try and time that out to get them home anyhow. So, um, that's the main reason for that. We provide that transportation to all away games for boys and girls. Um, continuing on, inclement weather. Um, this is always a tricky one because you have schools that have, um, that close for different reasons or, you know, you have a widespread like TCU when you're talking about La Center all the way over to Montgomery and, and along that whole corridor there. Um, you know, they might have a lot more of a weather pattern than we do or blowing snow, which has a bigger, bigger impact on there. Um, their routes going home and busing. And so in the past, it was always kind of like if Saint Peter closes, then, you know, it was a domino effect of everybody else. Well, there's just no practice. So this allowed us to have a little bit more communication and just having a more of a open, um, line of communication about who is doing what and what the expectations are of each school on the, more on a, you know, uh, each situational basis instead of just saying, here's the cut and dry rule, just because, you know, a lot of times it does come into effect that, um, you know, Cleveland might be closed because they had a lot of drifts, but Saint Peter stayed open. So does that mean that we're, you know, not having practice? Are we requiring Cleveland kids to get there even though their school is closed? And so it's just trying to alleviate that, but also allow some flexibility with all the other participants involved as well. Um, and that's a lot of just conversation between, um, superintendents and ADs of all the dis, of all the districts trying to make the best decision. And obviously, you know, if, if they're all practicing and we decide that it's just too dangerous, we just say Saint Peter will not be there today and, you know, they're obviously not held accountable for not making it to practice that day, but that is, um, an option that we obviously have. So, um, that was just trying to, making sure that's in there, that everyone kind of has their own option. So, um, inclement weather on there. Pay scale is what I referred to earlier. Um, next one is obviously probably the big one that people have seen, um, have heard about. So this is, um, to include a selection policy. Um, basically the reason for this is next year we are projected to be at about forty six boys hockey players. With a team being allowed to consist of twenty players at the most. So they're proposing and a lot of the other, all the other districts have, have okayed this, um, but it would be a maximum of thirty five players. Um, sorry, I should say a minimum of thirty five players. So they always at least have that, um, if they are using the selection policy. Um, we'll make up the JV and varsity team. Um, if there are more than thirty five, then they will have a tryout. The selection guideline is, um, listed. Um, with what is expected, um, from the coaching staff as well as what the districts and the parents will be aware of and. as well as what the districts and the parents will be aware of and, and athletes. So there'll be, um, very specific length for the tryout. There'll be a criteria given out beforehand. Um, they'll explain the number of players and the practice and game commitments moving forward, depending on, you know, the selection. Um, so each player will be allowed a minimum of five practices, must be allowed to participate in an inner squad scrimmage, must be personally informed of the reason or reasons for not being selected. So you're not just going to have a posting on the door of who's on what team and if your name's not on there. You know, thanks for coming. Obviously we're not going to have that. So it's the, um, we'll have an individual meeting with each player as the coaching staff. Um, and then if there is foreseen difficulties, um, you know, the ADs will be involved as well. So, um, this is obviously a, a big one. Like I said, the reason for it is, um, our projections next year are to have about forty-six, um, boys hockey players. Um, as a previous hockey coach, that is, um, a number that's just really is undoable as far as having a practice that is manageable, safe, and also allows you to, um, put together a good solid program to be competitive at a varsity level. Um, you know, we're, we're looking at thirty-five as the number, um, because you have your twenty that would dress for varsity. But just like any other sport, usually that, you know, bottom four or five that are on dressing varsity are playing JV to allow for them to get some, um, minutes on the ice. And then, um, we'll just dress varsity to be a part of that experience, maybe not necessarily get to play. So that's the reason for the number, um, for thirty-five is being the main number. Um, you know, the other piece is, you know, hockey is a bit different in that, um, we aren't able to just say, hey, we do have gym space. You guys can go ahead and go practice. Here's some more jerseys. We have a bunch of towns around us that have a ton of kids going out as well. So we'll find games, we'll find refs, we'll find busing. Um, for hockey, the unfortunate part is every school, the Mankato's, the Oatana's, the Cities, they have two teams. You know, they have a JV and a varsity. So we don't have a third team to go and play for these kids. So a lot of them are going to say, um, you know, they, we can guarantee, we can't guarantee you a ton of practice time because we can't fit forty-five students on the ice at the same time, um, unless we go in the mornings. We don't know how many games you're going to get. So really we're kind of putting them in limbo, um, as, as already, which is, is unfortunate. Um, hockey was, it's an expensive sport. If you haven't seen the numbers, but it's about a hundred ninety-five dollars an hour for ice time. Um, and so that is a huge, is a part of, part of it as well. And right now, an average I, practice time for a hockey teams is about an hour and fifteen minutes a day with two teams on the ice at the same time. And so to add in another, you know, potentially ten, twelve kids, as well as, um, basically another team of, of people on that ice, would just put it in a very difficult situation for us to be successful. Um, this year we did have about forty to forty-one. Um, we had a lot of morning practices, um, which was doable. However, they had to practice about six o'clock because of start times from all the different schools, had different start times in school. We wanted to make sure they got back on time and, um, you know, they were practicing at six AM. So our bus was leaving here at five fifteen AM. Um, and again, you know, that additional cost of the, the hour ice time, the, the busing is just a lot of different, um, factors that go into it. Um, it is a, um, you know, something that nobody wants to bring up or talk about or, you know, or have as a policy. But, um, as far as hockey goes, I feel it is, um, fair to, um, allow families to have a different option if it's not going to work out. Um, another option is that there is, um, what's called Junior Gold. It's an association that's, it's run through the association, just like their youth association is run, but it's for high school aged players that are not on the high school team. So they would still have an option to play, um, the game. It's maybe not in a, um, as part of the high school program. Um, so that'd be something we might be able to reach out to. Mankato's, New Prague has a team to allow students to still participate, just maybe in a different, um, avenue. So, um, I'm not sure if you have questions or are there things you maybe want clarified, on that policy?
Shay, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned students are admitted free of charge. That's just the regular season stuff? When you get into the sections and that, does that High School League take over?
Yes, yeah, that is correct. Yeah. Now, when that's, like you said, is High School League is mandated on the, whatever those price points are that they tell us.
Second one would be, um, transportation and that one scares me a little. If other districts are allowing their kids to drive to a practice, what is our liability in that sense, since the team is consists of five districts? If something would happen, you know, are we on hook for legal expenses and so forth in that case?
Um, to my knowledge, we would not be. And I think it is because we have this, that each district is in charge of how they get their students to, um, to each event or to each venue. Um, you know, so we have the requirements of our students to ride the bus from the high school to practice, to games and ride it back. Um, but other schools might not. And there's a variety of reasons for that. Um, some are that they don't have very many students. So they're not, they don't have the, you know, they don't have a bus to send four kids to, from Belle Plaine to, you know, La Sure or things like that. But, um, to my knowledge, I don't believe we would be involved or liable in any way.
Is that something we could check on?
You can, yeah.
I mean, a little bit of cost down might save a lot of costs down the road.
Um, Mr. Rock Cessie, I know we talked a little bit about that thirty-five number, um, but I did do some asking around. And it was surprising to me that people were generally in favor of this. I say that because, you know, I was like, ah, um. But a couple of things. So like, I'm guessing like if people are paying this, they would get their, their fees back, right? So I sign up, then never would happen. He would get paid, he'd get his money back.
Correct.
Um, how did you arrive at the thirty-five number? Talk me through that again.
So, um, like I said, so the, like, your varsity team can be, you can dress twenty. So it's usually, um, four lines of forward, which is twelve, three lines of defense, which is six, so you've got eighteen and then two goalies. Um, and then for the thirty-five is, as I said, that, that fourth line, which is three, um, three players and then your last, um, two or three defenseman, which gives you, you know, but putting it at five or six and then your other, your backup goalie are going to dress for that JV game. And so if you're saying, okay, well, varsity is twenty and, and, um, JV will keep twenty, so we're going to keep forty. Well, then even if you dress those JV, you still have five that aren't going to play in a JV game because you're, you're, you're varsity kids. And this is really any sport, you're, you're, you know, those kids that get to dress varsity are doing it because to get the experience, to see what it's like to be part of that varsity field, but they're playing, you know, their main role is on the JV or V squad or whatever you, we might term it for that sport. So that's where that, that thirty-five number comes from.
So I was just wondering why it wasn't forty, right?
Right, yeah.
So it's twenty, twenty, forty.
Yep.
Okay. And then, um, so yeah, so I just, because obviously I don't want to see that go beyond hockey. But I was convinced by many people that hockey is different. Because of the ice and then that we needed ice in town and, and we needed to build an ice arena, which I was like, yeah, we're really going to do that. But that ha, that ice is, that hockey is different because of the ice factor. Um, so I just wanted everyone to know that, that I don't anticipate this limiting how many people are in a sport to really go beyond hockey. Just want to go on record as saying that, um.
And I, I will second that. Like, I don't plan to.
Yeah.
The reason, the reason for this in hockey is, is that ice time piece. Um, you know, we don't have that extra time to give and make sure and there's not other teams for them to play. So there's a lot of limiting factors. Um, I'm sure if you ask the coaches if they would rather have this selection policy or have the limitations of an hour and fifteen practice with forty kids on one court, they'd probably stick with kind of how we're doing it. So there are a lot of limitations that come into play, which is part of that, like you mentioned, so.
Cause I like asked, like, happened to spend some time with the girls basketball coach from the last week. And he was like, totally like, could see that difference. So, cause that's what I was worried about, right? Like, what do we do for hockey? And now they're going to do it for girls basketball. Now they're going to do it for boys basketball or whatever. But no. So I am supporting that. Um, not that I decide everything, but I did give a lot, a lot of thought about that. It's just very different than anything we've done. Um, but speaking of ice, do we ever use ice time up at Gus Davis? Did we used to?
We do, yes.
We do.
Um, when it's available, like our, our youth association tries to get gobble up as much of it as it can just because that association is, is overflowing. Um, but we do, um, try to get, um, about boys and girls between the two of them practiced a few times a month at least up there, um, throughout the season.
Okay. And then, um, for the pay scale, please be attached. Is that just, that's not attached?
That's just, we haven't finalized it yet. Uh, like I said, it'll be a, something that'll be, um, trying to find a very similar between all the districts combined, as well as what's already been paid, because we're not going to go in and tell us they're not going to get paid as much. So it's kind of trying to find that, um, middle ground.
So are we approving this right then?
We need the motion.
Shay, is twenty the state tournament figure two for hockey?
Yes.
So there's no way about having to read it down more?
No, no, no. And this was the number that, um, like I said, like, doesn't thrill me either, but I do see the reason behind it. Um, I coached with these numbers before and it was a lot of asking kids to not practice that day and things like that, which is, um, is not fun either. And so it's an unnecessary evil, I guess. But, um, but yeah, it would not be all of a sudden that, well, they can only dress eighteen, so we're actually thinking less people. It's been twenty for as long as I know, so.
Oh, and then the other thing that I was asked about, so I just want to say it because so many people watch this school board meeting, um, is that, like, the numbers for Belle Plaine, and I ask you this too. Like, the last people into the co-op were like Belle Plaine and Cleveland. Talk a little bit about that. How many athletes we have on those?
So we do have, uh, kind of, and that was one thing coming up is, you know, if we get to that point. So every time the High School League does a review of this, the section placements, our co-op is big enough that it gets placed into the double A classification, which, um, would not do us any good for our program going to play Minnetonka and seeing how that goes, right? So, um, we petitioned down to single A, um, but part of that, um, agreement on here, I believe it's at the end here, is that if we aren't ever granted that, that, um, that waiver to stay in single A, we would be looking to remove a school that would get us below that cap line, whatever that number might be. And it varies year to year. Um, so usually we're looking at, you know, last in, first out type of situation, which in this case would be Belle Plaine. Um, you know, a lot of times that would get us below that number. Um, and we talked about this with, um, with Tracy, is that the issue is if we ask them to do that now, right now they're at about two or three students, which then we're still in the same boat as far as the selection policy because we're at forty-two instead of forty-five or forty-three, forty, forty-six. So doesn't really, um, solve our problem, other than, you know, dwindling down a little bit. And Cleveland is the same. You know, they just, they don't bring a lot of kids to our program. Now those numbers might be increasing at the youth level. I don't know what those numbers are, um, off the top of my head. But, you know, in the past years, it's been maybe four to five total between the two schools.
Shay, you alluded earlier to, uh, the numbers in the junior program are, are pretty significant. Do you foresee a time when we can be a standalone?
For Saint Peter alone? Um, although I think a lot would have to take place. Um, Tracy mentioned earlier, we'd probably need to get another sheet of ice, which, um, would be a whole nother.
Is that the Rock Cessie Arena?
What's that?
The Rock Cessie Arena.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be coming right up, everyone. Um, but yes, that would be the, uh, I mean, that would be step one. Um, I think if we had that, you could see numbers increase. Um, but right now, we usually are probably about, last year we had thirteen students, ten through twelve on the varsity boys program. Um, next year I think we'll probably be right around there to thirteen to fifteen. When I was coaching, the most we had, I think, was eighteen to nineteen. So, you know, to, to go and standalone all by yourself with that, um, you'd be taking your lumps for a few years to build it back up, I guess. But I wouldn't say never, but I don't know if it's down the road very soon.
You mentioned forty-six potential, uh, boys next year. Do you know what the girl numbers might be?
Next year we'll be at about twenty-three, I believe, after losing the seniors and bringing in. And then, then we have a pretty big class that will be in the twenty-five, twenty-six season. So it'll jump back up.
Good.
Yeah, twenty-three, I believe, is the number I was given by.
And I just wanted to add also, it's very nice to have you here. Activities are a big part of our program. So thanks for being here.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
I want to make a motion to approve the hockey co-op agreement.
A second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Discussion, discussion. Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side? Motion carries. We have approved the hockey cooperative agreement. Thank you.
That was going right in.
Stay right in the hockey.
Information items. Activities director update.
This one will be a little more lighthearted, so. Um, well, this is an update. I was asked to kind of start doing a quarterly update, which I think is probably something that is, is a good. And, um, after that March was one of those, um, quarterly updates, which comes at a very good time. As of last week was a pretty exciting and chaotic week. Um, as you know, we had, um, the end of our winter season, um, with the girls basketball last weekend. And overall, our winter seasons went fantastic. We had, um, a wrestler make it to the, qualify for a state individual tournament. Two gymnasts, um, qualify as well. And then, um, you know, we had the, the last two weeks, we had some amazing basketball games with, if you went to any of the, um, the games between the girls at home at Gus Davis and up at the U and then the boys game in New Ulm. It was a lot of, it was kind of like you look at and like, this is what high school athletics should be about. It's, it was a community. There was a lot of people there from both sides. It was a fun atmosphere of people cheering for their, their teams. And it was, it was a pretty cool experience overall. Um, but the girls basketball, obviously, um, kind of highlights what our, our winter season had. Um, finished twenty-nine and three, um, consolation bracket champions and brought home some hardware at the, um, three A state basketball tournament, which is, um, which is phenomenal. We did have one athlete named to the all tournament team, um, Ryan Holmgren, and she's also going to be representing Saint Peter at the All-Star Game here in a couple of weeks. Um, and so that's pretty exciting to, to have that publicity out there as well and what she's doing as, um, as a, as a student athlete for us. Um, and the community support overall was just fantastic throughout the entire winter and, and spring for that, or fall, I should say, for that matter, since we haven't had one since then. But, um, it was very, very fun to see, very, um, exciting. The, if you were at Gus Davis for the girls games, like our side was completely packed and with, um, with some community members. So it was just, it was a lot of fun and, um, a great way to cap off a, a very fun winter season. Um, other updates, um, the biggest one being from our conference. So the Big South Conference is the conference that we're in for athletics and, um, and activities. And so we, um, have had a few, quite a few discussions over the last month or two with our, um, other member schools to try and kind of come up with what is the best option moving forward. Um, it was getting to be a point where we had too many different moving pieces about what we were doing. For example, um, volleyball was doing in East and West in the, in our, um, conference. Basketball was doing three pods and then baseball and softball were doing big and small. So kind of each sport did its own thing, which, you know, when you're looking at it as a sport, maybe makes sense. But when you're looking at it the broad picture as a family member or even as an AD, a lot of it was like, this is like, kind of too much to wrap your head around, especially when you have so many schools. And so we tried to come together and come up with an agreement that makes most sense to, um, give us the best options as a conference for. Um, geography was coming into play, um, what we offer as far as competitive, um, uh, teams that we can, can play against one another, section opponents, um, and then, you know, size of school as well. And so, um, what we have just come up with is going into like black and gold divisions, um, those being the colors of the conference logo. Um, and our division, um, and then this would be for a majority of our activities. So volleyball, boys and girls cross country, girls tennis, boys and girls basketball, wrestling, gymnastics, baseball, softball, boys and girls golf, and then track and field as well. Our side or our division would be Worthington, Marshall, New Ulm, Saint Peter, Wasika, and then now next year adding TCU and Belle Plaine. So a lot of schools that are similar in size, but also very close. We do have the, the further trips in Worthington and Marshall, but pretty much every sport was making those trips anyhow because of them being in our section and similar in size and things like that. So, um, so that would, that would be how. So that would, that would be how it's going to be set up for our um, for a majority of our sports, for boys and girls hockey, um it's similar, but our side will be Marshall, Wasika, New Ulm, and then us is Minnesota River. Um, and then for boys and girls soccer, it's more on geography, um but it's Wasika, TCU, St. Peter, and New Ulm. Then depending on how often you play, teams will depend on the sport, so some will play each school twice in their side. Um, some will play, so hockey and soccer, you're playing it, every team on your side twice, then the other side um one time, so it kind of depends on, especially the main be, um. Main reason being the number of activities or events that you're allowed to host, so basketball, you have twenty-six, you're going to be able to play those teams more often than volleyball, who has sixteen or seventeen. So um that's the main piece there, um we do offer speech, one act play, and choral festivals that will be all as one. Um, as a conference, and depending on how many schools offer that, we might break into two, and sometimes we host, sometimes we go to different schools. Um, and then we also will be doing a leadership conference, which we have the last number of years as one large conference as well. So those are kind of the big main changes to our conference, um we'll be getting rid of showcase days. Um, and then we'll also be, but we'll still be having our conference championship type events and things like that, so. Um, kind of the biggest changes that, sticking to that two division um throughout the. Um, you know, fall to spring compared to mix and match.
Did you mention boys tennis, or did I miss?
Um, yeah, sorry, that would be um the Worthington, Marshall, New Ulm, St. Peter, that'd be one of the main ones, yep. Um, and that might change a little bit for boys tennis, um like Marshall does not have it, so we would remove them, but Fairmont would be joining our side, so just to even out the numbers. Yes, so. So a lot of it just kind of depends on the, there might be some mixing and matching, but overall, ours will be pretty well set, which. I think is the best for our conference as a whole, it's a pretty good setup for St. Peter, geography wise, um competition wise, offerings wise as well, so. Um, and then other than that, um spring sports have officially started, last week was softball and track and field, this week, baseball and boys and girls golf got started. Um, and then next week is tennis, adapted bowling is going on, um our spring play is up and running, headed for early May as a um. As the performances, then obviously we have our concerts, seventh and eighth grade tonight, um high school has one tomorrow, and then, you know, other band and other choir concerts throughout the spring as well, so things are. Kind of calm compared to last week, and it's supposed to snow, alright, so that's, that's how the spring will go, but that's alright.
I'd be remiss, because I get hammered on this all the time, and I've spoken to you about it before, but. Do we have a requirement of our coaches to put the results into the free press?
Yes, they send them in, um I know that our basketball coaches email them in, and um. I know a lot of times they don't get posted, we try to send them out through social media as well, um but, yeah.
Because it's weird, I mean. For instance, when Jordan was here. The boys played first, I believe, the girls second. The girls' score was in, but the boys wasn't. I mean, you could understand if it was flip-flop and the girl in the last game didn't get in in time, but. When the last one gets in and the first one gets overlooked. You wonder what, what's going on.
I'm not sure. I know, I do ask that the coaches send them in, I guess I'll. Um, check their emails, but I'm, it's under the assumption that they're sending them in and recording them.
The boys at coffee get awful, you son of a.
Yeah, sure. Makes sense.
Thanks for your work on the conference um stuff, because I know that was probably a lot of work, but it was kind of a mess.
It was.
You know, it started out good, and then a lot of add-ons kind of went on to it, and it got a little kind of crazy, so.
It did, it was time to just take a step back and. Revamp, so it'll be, we'll be in a good spot moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Shay. Yeah, driver's ed vehicle. Megan.
Is it not the parking lot for us to go?
Do we get a test drive? I even parallel parked. Um, alright, so I will talk fast, Mr. Clubbing came to us earlier this year, the driver's ed car had um, had, I don't know what the word I'm looking for. They had looked over the driver's ed car, had a few things that needed to be fixed, and then he inquired longer picture, bigger picture, when are we going to replace the car? We bought it in October of twenty fifteen, has quite a few miles on it, so we asked around with other districts um to see whether they purchased or leased. A hundred percent of them said that they purchased their vehicles, um and so we are recommending that we purchase a new driver's ed car with our operating capital funds. We are still unsure what we are going to do with the existing driver's ed car, it might be Bill's new car, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but. We, yeah, we are going to replace the driver's ed car, um and then we're still playing around with ideas for what to do with the existing one.
And that's generally a used vehicle that's purchased.
Yes, yep, and we are going to try our best to shop locally, we would love to, to shop at Lagers, it kind of depends on availability, um we found a few things like in Wasika and New Ulm. So there are some vehicles available that are close to us, at this time, Lagers doesn't have anything, but I know Mr. Clubbin has been inquiring, and so that would be what we would like to do if we can.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alright, time for reports.
Alright, nothing teeth, I get to start, um I think the last time we were here, um we were just a week ahead of uh the kindergarten registration night, open house, and we had eighty families that came through that night. Um, unfortunately, not all of them registered at that time, so we'll continue to solicit registrations from those families, we now at least have contact information for them, so. Um, our hope is to get our enrollment to at least the hundred and thirty-five that we have this year. Um, we also finished up access testing with our ELL learners, so we're excited to see where our students come out with all of that, and I believe that is happening district-wide, I'm not sure how far everyone else is in that, but. We completed ours today. And Friday is the close of the third quarter, so we're looking forward to a PBIS, school-wide PBIS celebration on Wednesday. As well as a teacher work day on Friday. And we are keeping it brief.
Alright, greetings from our elementary, uh March seventh, we had our annual arts and academic night, it was a great night, it was pre-packed, Mr. Rosso, I believe I saw you there as well, um.
Next year, I'm in the spelling bee.
Yeah, next year, and yeah. Get to the classroom level first. You can do it. So big shout out to uh Hallie Lind, who uh got first, second was Declan Norton, who was first last year, and third went to Ruby Vanderlinde. Who's here spelling bee, and that takes a lot of courage to get up there in front of, there's about a little over a hundred people usually in the crowd, maybe one fifty, so it's, it's a pretty packed event, and that's just a great night, town all over the building, so. Thanks to our coordinators for that, they do a phenomenal job. Another competition we have, just wrapped up continental math, we had a little bit different structure for that this year, we actually invited. Um, any student at our second, third, and fourth grade to participate, and uh Mr. Robinson was a coach this year, and he just offered. Um, a certain number of coaching sessions um on various nights, and then they had competitions, so second and third graders had three competitions that they could participate in, and then fourth grade had five. And so we had, you know, first with third place winners, and um a lot, a lot of students participated, some, some were in and out, um and they certainly were challenged, so we liked that format, because it just opened it to everybody, like anybody could participate and, and compete. Uh, jungle book play, uh parts, tryouts and parts are going on right now, um and that's going to be huge, um right around eighty students show interest, so there's a lot, it's big, it's really big. That is awesome, it's very awesome, um so director, um. Um, let's see, Dustin Lenhoff, um has been doing it a number of years, and he actually secured a grant through the Prairie Lakes Regional Arts Council, twenty-five hundred dollars to put toward more support for the program, which he will need with eighty students participating, so that's great, that's the first time for that. And then a couple of individual events, so last week, we had um our Math-a-Thon, which happens to be on Pi Day, um and so students were kind of just working on math for an hour long, and they get sponsored for that, and those funds go to PBIS. Buy shirts for kids, for North shirts and things like that, so thanks to the community and families that participated and sponsored students, and then we also have um. A date coming up this week, three twenty-one, which represents Trisomy Twenty-One Day, which is World Down Syndrome Day. Um, trisomy twenty-one is the clinical term for the diagnoses of Down Syndrome, and I happen to know a self-advocate. Who happens to live in the Doherty household currently, and he will be presenting to just about every classroom. On Wednesday, and then his hope is get as many kids to participate in wearing the crazy colored socks in order to represent uh self-advocacy in World Down Syndrome Day. Stop on into North if you want to catch Mason Doherty in action around the building.
Convince them it's Mason. Uh, I believe that we were just heading into uh the week that we were hosting Black Joy Day at the high school, the last time that we had a board meeting, so I know a few of you were able to make it, uh and we were very happy to see you there. Uh, it was, speaking of budget, the whole thing was um, was, we were able to put that on uh because of donations from the uh Good Neighbor Diversity Council. Two thousand dollars from that organization, and five thousand dollars from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Um, and it's, I've got to thank John Warren again for all of the work that he put in um on that, as well as a teacher, um a group of teachers that dedicated a lot of time, it was, it was a, it was a great day. Uh, also, FFA week, I believe, was the week following that, uh so our two brand-new teachers, St. Peter grads, pulled that one off, and, and uh it, that was a really fun week, it always is. Um, Jacob Pearson and Jasmine Witty did a fantastic job with that, um and I got to thank the girls' basketball team for just a super fun season. Uh, it was, it was just great following them throughout the whole season, and especially their games at state. Thanks to those girls.
Alright, um, yes, and coaches. Um, at Rock Bend, we are actually back to a waiting list, so we talk about enrollment numbers going down, but we are back to a waiting list, we have um two students from outside of the St. Peter School District. Hoping to get in. Um, we recently took our students uh to the new fire station in town, there's some interest in uh becoming firefighters, so we all went and did that. Um, we have several career um events coming up, Job Corps, there's a small group of students going to check out Job Corps tomorrow, and then the Career Expo is in early April. We just finished a really successful night school session, quarter three, ninety percent of the enrolled students earned credit, which is awesome, and we had about five students earn credit in more than one class, which that, we've never had. That many students finish more than one class, so just a thank you to our teachers who are doing such good work there, and the students, of course. Um, referral letters for uh the final session of night school this year are going out this week and next week, as we wrap up third quarter grades at the high school. Um, and then we are planning for summer school as well. Um, and at Oshawa, we are still seeing an increasing enrollment as well, our enrollment is up forty percent, and I put it in percentage form, because. The jump from eighteen to twenty-six may not seem large, but I mean, it, it is a forty percent increase in students for us, and that, that makes a big difference in our small space. And I just thought it was interesting to share um that our age demographic just continues to go down, so. Um, three years ago, we were thirty percent middle school students, so five through eight, then we were thirty-five, and now we're at thirty-nine percent middle school students, so almost half and half. Um, so just as that enrollment goes up, it, we're just seeing more middle school kids, so. That's what's happening in alternative programs.
There's a middle school concert tonight, which is where.
Which is where John is.
Doctor.
Doctor Graff.
That's the other big news from the middle school, don't forget to go to the doctor next time, he loves.
Thank you all. Mr. Graff said.
Yes, um Director Kout and myself, uh spent the day at the Capitol today with MSBA, M A S A. Day at the Capitol, we had an opportunity to hear uh from people from both organizations, but also a couple of panels, one of senators, another of representatives, and then. He and I had some meetings with individual legislators and had good conversations about. Uh, education finance, education policy. I think that there is a, a good understanding, that last session was a lot, with fourteen hundred education bills and sixty-five new mandates, and. It's clear that there was not enough funding. One of the bills that has been passed into law already is some changes to the SRO language, you may remember after legislation last year, there was some. Uh, some, there was a lot of conversation between police departments and school districts, and some police departments pulled out of school districts. And uh I think that the changes that have been made. Um, reinstating some of the reasonable use of force by police officers will go a long way to. Bringing SROs back into schools and helping them to feel more comfortable in schools again, so thank you to legislators for that work. Um, there's also a lot of discussion about uh Red Act two point oh, but today, we learned that it could be eight point oh, because. Eight different versions have been presented already, uh each with some adjustments to the funding piece, to some of the requirement pieces, uh and we have. That, that is something that we will be watching closely, because we know that also has financial implications for the district. We know there's a long way to go uh for the legislative session, the deadlines for having a first reading for anything to be considered is coming up next week. So after next week, there would be no new bills included unless something got put into an omnibus bill that. We know sometimes happens, so those are important to watch as well. So thank you, Director Kout, for spending the day with me at the Capitol, for having some, some great conversations. Uh, I too wanted to give a shout out to the girls' basketball team. And for the first ever, and probably likely never again, the Saints Day, that happened because. We had a snow dayless winter, followed by a team going to state, um which made for a fun day, it was great to see so many. Families uh in the stands at the state tournament, and um it was a, it was a good turnout, so thank you for that. Um, also a shout out to Kimberly Demming, who has been taking notes as fast as she can over there this evening, and has been doing a wonderful job since joining the. District office just a week ago today, so.
Welcome.
Things are moving quickly. Yeah. Um, and also, not to end on a terrible subject, but um the budget is uh something that we. Don't take lightly, I know that there are a lot of difficult decisions and a lot of difficult discussions that lie ahead of us, and um. All the voices matter in this decision, every part of the district. And know that as we, as we do this. You know, there are so many people in the district, staff, students, board members, constituents, who put a lot of time and effort and passion. Into developing the very best programming that we can for our students and our community, and none of us have come into this. To, to face a budget like we are and see us kind of pull things apart that we really don't want to pull apart, but. It is our fiduciary responsibility as a district to make sure that we are operating within, within the boundaries of our budgets, and we will do the very best that we can. Together to come up with the best plan for our district for the, for the near future, anyway.
Board members around the table. Mr. Ross back.
Uh, welcome to Kim, thank you for joining us, and congrats to the basketball team on the high school, I think that's fantastic, so.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you, administrators, your patience in going over the, everything, it's a, a long evening to sit there, just so Kimberly knows. Because of your first night, we tried to keep this meeting short. Just kidding. Welcome.
Um, I just want to say a little bit, um I was up at the state tournament and have the privilege of kind of spending an extended length of time with our basketball team, and granted, I think the coaches are fabulous, because my husband is one of them, but. But specifically with the basketball team, and I don't get to spend a lot of time with high school kids. And they lost that first game by one point. And I got to watch the girls, like first off, they were heartbroken. Like their goal was they were going to win that first game. They knew it was going to be tough, but they were going to win it and they were going to have the TV game, right? They were going to win it, they were going to play against that really hard next game and they maybe were going to win that or maybe they weren't, but they were going to win it and they lost by one, right? And that's heartbreaking. We went back to the hotel and they just held each other up. There was, you know, one with a sprained ankle, we have one with a back that can barely walk, this, you know, pneumonia. We have all this stuff going on, but they held each other up. They had a horrible night, the coaches are sad, everyone sad about the next day. They pulled it together and they had two more amazing days and they came up with a victory. And just watching them kind of holding, you know, they're just, it was amazing to watch. And, and they crushed it and they had two great games, but there was just good sportsmanship. It was fun watching the community come, even for that second game, like honestly, we thought there was going to be ten people in the stands and there wasn't. There was a good number of people there. I got to see like students like actually still cleaning up the popcorn bags, even though nobody was there to tell them to clean it up. And it was just fun. I mean, I kept saying, there's nothing greater than a raider, you know, because I'm from Nickled. But really, the Saints are pretty awesome. And so, it was just, it was a really, really fun experience. You know, the bus driver was into it, the coaches are awesome, and I just felt really, really proud to be from St. Peter. So it was really awesome, so that's all I wanted to say.
Great, thanks. Mr. Kout?
Yeah, Bill kind of stole all the thunder about the, that's okay. The Legislative Day at the Capitol, I guess, for those of you who have the time, our lobbyists put on a chat every Friday morning at nine o'clock. And if you need the Zoom address for that, just shoot me a text or an email and I'll send it to you. Because it usually comes out on Thursday, so. There are going to be a lot of interesting things with the legislature and as usual, it's our job to point out the unintended consequences of some of the bills that are passed. Especially, we talk about some of the labor situations. I don't know if you heard now, but there's a bill going forth in one of the two houses that is going to give striking unions the right to collect unemployment if they go on strike. And what MSBA is trying to point out to the legislators is, you know, given the uniqueness of a school district where we're required to have so many hours of education, if our, one of our bargaining units were going to strike and school was not able to be held, they could all collect unemployment. And then we would settle and they would have to come back and make up the days they missed so that in reality, by getting that unemployment, they would get paid twice for that day. And it's, it's little things like that that, as we're made aware of those, they ask for us to communicate to our legislators. So I'll try and keep you informed of the requests that are coming through that, through our lobbyists in that chat line. Other than that, I would like to say thank you to Kate for all her work with Kimberly on the election and lining up judges and so forth. It's a crucial thing. If you don't have judges, it's kind of hard to hold an election. So thank you to both of you for the efforts. I mean, talk about jumping in with both feet. So.
That's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
No, I'm in a, not, not tonight.
And I just want to say to Kimberly, thank you because she started before she started here, helped with this election stuff and getting it all put together. So congratulations and what a wonderful district with kids. It's just amazing, you know? All right.
Awesome, thank you. Um, we've got the upcoming committee meetings listed in the agenda, all leading up to the regular board meeting on Monday, April fifteenth. We'll be right back. So we need to get our taxes done. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great night.
Thank you.